I'm going to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. They're in uniform, so scouts face toward the flag and you can salute. You're not in uniform, you put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, Mayor Plon, presentation?
Yeah. Council President, come on up. Mr. Merkandonte, if you could come on up, please. The City Council and I just wanted to recognize Mr. Merkandonte. He pretty much, for the last 12 years, had put together the Columbus State Parade. And it's an endeavor that I think you start the next day after Columbus State put it together. But if you think about it, just coordinating the bands and everything else that's involved, it's quite an undertaking. And he does that all as a volunteer. And we appreciate his effort over the years and hope that he'll continue to do that. So, thanks. Our Council President, Willis, if you could just make your presentation.
At this time, I'd like to hold a certificate of recognition to Joseph R. Doudou, the recipient of his outstanding efforts in organizing the 2018 Long Branch Public Parade, who then is currently a volunteer in 2018. And thank you so much for all the work you've done. We really truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, or none. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 21-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 173-5C Fire Prevention of the Code of the City of Long Branch Increasing Fees." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 15th, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. I'm removing ordinance number 22-18 for further discussion another time. The next item, this is the first reading of ordinance 23-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Granting a Five-Year Tax Exemption to Manuel Sarah for Development Project of Property Located at 45 Ocean Terrace and Designated as Block 302 Lot 19." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 15th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Creating the City of Long Branch Code Chapter 262, Article 3, to Establish an Abandoned Property List Pursued to NJSA 5519-55." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 15th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 25-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Creating Chapter 262, Article 3 of the Code of the City of Long Branch to Require Foreclosing Creditors to Care For and Maintain Exterior Vacant and Abandoned Properties During the Penancy of a Foreclosure Action." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 15th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 26-18 entitled, "An Ordinance Creating a New Chapter 262, Article 3 in the Code of the City of Long Branch to Implement Vacant Property Registration Process." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 15th, 2018.
So moved. Second. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Okay.
Vincent Lapore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, request one-minute notification. Recently, there was an article in a Long Branch publication called "The Link," entitled, "Why Public Comments at Meetings Are Overrated." It was by Neil Shulman. And he goes on to give advice to people to get up to this podium and speak. I'm going to quote one paragraph. "There are some people who think you need to talk at council meetings because otherwise it's not on the public record." That's a direct quote from Mr. Shulman's article in "The Link." Mr. Shulman, hear it loud and clear right now. You're not going to suck up to the Palone administration off my back the way you sucked up to the Schneider administration off my back. I find it insulting that an individual like you can offer critique on people coming up to this podium to discuss affairs of this city when you, as a reporter, cannot accurately be accountable to the public record. One incident recently concerned the seniors and the senior center. On September 26th, there was a meeting here in this room. On the public record, clearly 70% of that meeting dealt with baseless discrimination allegations by Alice Kessler against the staff of the senior center. And what did you do, Mr. Shulman, the following week? You completely ignored that portion of the council meeting. But what you did was ran a photo op of Alice Kessler at a fundraising event. If there's any doubts, they're all removed now. Mr. Shulman, you are the classic definition of fake news. Because fake news is not accurately reporting and leaving out details, as you did on 70% of a council meeting, Mr. Shulman. In light of his article, I want to congratulate Mr. Anthony DeLuca and Ms. Patty Fisher of the West End Watch Dogs. They are what is considered today modern pamphleteers, very similar to what this country experienced in its revolution, the American Revolution. You see, back then, you couldn't depend on the mainstream media. Then we're, in every sense of the word, with the status quo. But the West End Watch Dogs were able to take the public record of the council meetings to the people accurately with today's technology. They were pioneering pamphleteers. But they did one thing further. They opened it up to public comment on their Facebook page about the public record, Mr. Shulman, the accurate public record. They held up to the tyrannical, corrupt, tax-burdensome administration of the Schneider teams, something you did not accurately report, Mr. Shulman. So, Mr. Shulman, before you come into this room again and write another article on a critique of people coming up to this podium and using your other definitions that some people come up here and posture, and they come up here and give histories or whatever, you come up here, Mr. Shulman, once.
Mr. Lapore, you have one minute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For once, you try and come up here and do something constructive. And never forget, Mr. Shulman, you are getting paid to be here for a profit venture called "The Link" newspaper where Mr. DeLuca and Ms. Patty Fisher of the West End Watch Dogs are here voluntarily to bring concerns of the public to the citizens of Long Branch. And everybody that comes up here to this podium as a citizen is doing it without pay or without profit, expressing their concerns. They have junk government in this city. You, Mr. Shulman, are not only fake news, you're junk journalism.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
I'm Lyndis Wemby and I reside at 157 Seventh Avenue, Apartment D106. I'm going to change the atmosphere here.
Name an address, Lynda.
I did. I just did. Okay. Lyndis Wemby, I live at 157 Seventh Avenue, Apartment D106. I'm going to change the atmosphere here. I'm going to say, and I mean this with all respect to the mayor and everyone in the council, I appreciate what you've done in my, in the area that I live in. Lippincott Avenue. When I first started complaining, and I'm sure others did too, it was a mess a year, a few months ago. It's since been straightened out. I walked by, I think it was Rockwell and Central, the yellow house on the corner, straightened up, you wouldn't even know it was the same, same address. It's all straightened up, clean, like there was nothing ever there. And I appreciate, I like what you've done outside here, just out by the library. Things have changed a lot. And thank you. And thank you for being concerned for the people of Long Branch and even myself, when at times I've been kind of down and out. You've been concerned, you are concerned for the people of Long Branch, and I appreciate that. But I do have one concern. There's a tree out here that has the camera on it. Now, that's hollow, getting hollow on the bottom. You can, you know, and if the wind, if, I think if the wind blew just right, it could be a problem. So, you know, a few months, a few weeks ago, you had the tree trimmers, and I was watching them, and, but on Sun, this Sunday, there was a tree fell down on Seventh and Jolene, or Seventh Avenue, and it was in better shape than the tree outside. And I just was asking if that tree could be cut down? Because if you go out there and look at it, it's hollow. And the right amount of wind, right amount of snow, or whatever, it could fall down. There's a possibility that it could fall. And maybe when somebody's walking by, you know, it might, somebody might get hurt. So if you could address that issue, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Lynda, thank you. I know you talk to Beth all the time. If you, if you wouldn't mind, just get like the neighboring house addressed there where that tree is and give it...
It's right, it's right outside here, right?
Oh, you mean on, on our property right here?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. It's the one with the camera.
Okay.
It's the first tree. It's kind of leaning, it's not straight up, it's kind of leaning.
We'll check it out tomorrow. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hello. My name is Ricardo Mercado. My address is 185 Lockwood Avenue in Elbrom. Um, I've come here because I wanted to ta, well, first, before I ask anything more, because you guys have helped us so much already, I just wanted to thank you for your participation in Ross Island, because it's, took us two years, and the second you guys stepped in, it took almost three months and we were done. Um, I also wanted to just thank you for every help that you've been to us, but now I want to ask, since our Ross Island project is mostly over, we ask that you want to help us? We want to work together to change Jackson Woods into the beautiful place it was before Sandy. Um, I grew up in Jackson Woods and my dad would bring me there, and it was amazing until Sandy. And now it's just, it's not as good. So, so, we're asking if you could help rebuild... We're asking if you can make trails? Help us build trails and plant native plants so that future generations like me are able to see the beauty that it was before. Can't you tell me, go?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Luna and I live at 150 Garfield Ave. And on behalf of Scout Troop 148, we thank you for letting us camp on the beach and we look forward to doing it again, and for the Seventh Ave, Avenue Garden, and for the Ross Island help.
So, I, I, I want to thank you both, because I know you had a lot to do with helping out there on Ross Island. Uh, I also want to thank your Scott, Scout leader, Mr. Luvern Burnley, Levester Burnley, for, for having such a great scout program and, you know, which is hard to, hard to do. So thank you for all your efforts and, and everything you do here in our community. And then, the Jackson Woods, I just want to let you know that we have applied for a grant, and I don't know if you've been over there lately, but you know, it's been significantly improved in the last couple of months. It's really quite nice. And did you know about Saturday, the, the big event cleanup and there's a, are you, are you part of that as well?
Um, we did, we did hear about it, and we were going to go to it, but sadly, I couldn't make it. So I knew that we were fixing it up, so I decided I would, you know, push it closer to what we needed to happen.
Well, I could put you or, or Mr. Burnley in touch with the group that's kind of very involved in that, and, and, and certainly they could always use some help. But again, thank you for all you do. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. And then there's this minor problem that I don't think needs fixing, but I just wanted to mention it. You put three turtle crossing signs, which we think, but one was, I don't know if it was stolen, but it's not there anymore. There was three sign, um, it's, I forgot the street name, but it's a street where Ross Island is on. There's two on that street, and then the crossing street right here, there was a sign, and I, I just don't know where it went. The first day it came, my dad saw them.
Oh, okay.
The last one was stolen. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Patty Baraki, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. Um, I just had a couple concerns. There were some seniors and some disabled people that are living in the, uh, Garfield and the Gregory, uh, housing. And they've been having some mold issues, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm very concerned. Uh, some of them are a little bit, um, I guess tired. They've been trying for a couple of years to get some attention there, and, uh, at this point, they're a little concerned for their health. And I think, Mr. Plon, that you are aware of that, correct?
Yes. Not only am I aware of it, Patty, but also, uh, we've, you know, I've been in touch with Ms. Wright, who's the executive director there. Ms. Wemby actually is constantly in touch with Beth. So, you know, they're on it. I think they're doing the, the best that they can. You know, it's a strange situation because it's a housing authority, it's a public-private complex there, and I guess it's the Conifer Organization that actually owns the property. But, um, yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't want to push it on the housing authority, but I mean, in other words, we are, you know, we're in constant communication and, and they're, they're trying, you know, they're trying to get it resolved there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um...
I mean, my, my understanding is, well, you know what? It's, it's technical, it's probably better that I don't talk about what the issue is, because I could be totally wrong.
Okay. As long as, as the situation is being addressed at both locations, not just the Gregory School, but also the, I think it's the Garfield Grant Building, the housing there, that has...
That, that I'm not aware of.
Yeah.
The Gregory School is the issue that I've been discussing with, with Ms. Wright.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that both...
And, and some of the people are also copying letters to the housing authority to us.
Yes.
Sid Johnson has been over there from the Health Department, so he did an analysis that he could, he could as well, so...
Okay. And then, just another question for my, my own self. With, I guess it would be like a police blotter-type situation.
Patty, could you move over the microphone a little bit?
When something's happening in town, um, uh, you know, police are called, like tonight, for example, Cedar Avenue was blocked off with two police cars, um, for a good section of Cedar Avenue. And a lot of times, people are wondering, you know, well, how do we find out what happened there, or, you know, just common knowledge. It, it appears Facebook seems to be the place where a lot of people go to find out, well, what's going on here, what's going on there. Is there, um, in the police blotters, is it only like confirmed, like DUIs, or, you know, or, or are those things incidents not ever written up?
I don't know. Is the chief here? He's not, can you?
I'm not sure what their criteria is for what...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I could certainly find out.
What, what's released publicly, Patty? Is that the question?
Yeah, you know, like a police blotter doesn't have to necessarily name names. It could just say, "A DUI took place on Jolene," or whatever, you know? It doesn't have to be a personal, you know, be, uh, show guilt before someone's actually gone to court, but just to let the public know when an incident has occurred, they could maybe find out, oh, that's why the street was blocked, or what have you, you know?
Correct. Yeah, and I, I think that those are done pursuant to requests that are made, and they're specific, and the chief would have, would know it off the top of his head, there's specific guidelines as to what exactly, what information they can release.
Because as, you know, a lot of us know, you know, rumors, you know, can fly, and, you know, getting the accurate information in a police blotter situation is certainly much better than just having people commenting and guessing. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Domenica Prashindara and I live at 10 Pavilion Avenue. On October 2017, we brought a petition stating that Ocean Point Towers did not have sufficient parking spots. As of today, parking at night has gotten worse. We have taken pictures to prove the problem, as Carol will explain further. We have submitted a copy to Rose Community, the owner of Ocean Point Towers, and a copy to HUD. And I will give you a copy of it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Brennan. I live at 10 Pavilion Avenue in Ocean Point Towers. The reason we came tonight is to give you sort of an update on what's happening. We're not getting a new parking lot. They keep saying it's not in the budget. But because we've heard that somebody told one of you people that the reason we have a parking overload problem is people are parking there to go to the beach, well, nobody can park in our lot after 5:00 unless you are a resident. You have a particular sticker on your car that says you are a resident. So we have photos of the cars parked in the fire lane after dark, after 5:00. And there's at least seven to maybe up to 15 cars that are parked there. It's a problem, because if there was ever a fire or an emergency, it could be a real problem. According to what we have, there is 150 units in Ocean Point Towers with 80 parking spaces. Management has managed to give out 95 Resident Vehicle stickers. So where are these other 15 people going to park? In the fire lane. So we have sent a letter to the management, which is called Rose Community Management, including these pictures that you already have, and they, they're getting pictures too. And we're still asking for a larger parking lot. And we just wanted to let you know, this is where we've gotten so far.
And it's getting worse.
And it's getting worse.
Any questions?
I mean, Carol, you know, I've, I've talked to your manager a few times. I haven't, I, I called her, I guess, the last time we talked, and I don't remember what the issues, but I could, you know, for whatever it's worth, I'd be happy to be, give her, give her a call tomorrow and, and see if there's any update, and mention that you were here, and, and, you know, whatever you'd like me to do. I mean, obviously, you know, we've had the conversation that they're sort of a private entity, so, um, but like I said, I'd be happy to make a call to her if you think it would help.
The problem is that if you talk to the management, she doesn't do much, and she doesn't, she can't help you.
Uh, according to the letter we're sending, we're sending it to John Barrett. Evidently, he is the person over, Sabrina Brighter, our manager, and he is...
He's with Rose Company then?
He is with Rose Company. So we can give you his name and his number.
If you would like me to call him just to express that, you know, you were here and that's your concern, and...
We think that would be a better idea, yeah.
I'll give you the phone number.
All right.
On a personal note, thank you to the Long Branch, um, what was it? Anyway, about my mold issue. I'm now going to get moved up to another apartment, and I guess they're going to try to abate the mold in my apartment, so thank you to Sid.
Thank you.
Hi. Lilian Grauman, 396 Second Avenue. Just, just a quick comment on what Patty had brought up about being notified about issues, police issues in Long Branch. I subscribe to, it's called NIXLE, and I get, I get alerts from Asbury Park, Interlake Inn, Oceanport, West Long Branch, about whether there'd be motor vehicle accidents, whether they've arrested somebody for whatever reason. And curious how come Long Branch has not, is not part of that? And I can show you the text if you're interested in, in seeing what exactly gets texted to anyone that has signed up for this service, but...
What's the name of this?
NIXLE, N-I-X-L-E dot U-S. And, you know, like Asbury Park... And, you know, like Asbury Park, it'll, it'll give you a flood warning, Ocean, Ocean Township Police, community event, coffee with a cop, or, you know, Ocean Township Police, press release, vehicle burglaries, and motor vehicle thefts. You know, they bring up all these different issues from, from surrounding towns, but, and, and when I was looking at this, I'm like, I've never seen Long Branch. So that might be something that, that we can look into. If residents want, they can sign up and be notified of different things that happen in town.
Lilian, I talked to the business administrator from Toms River South. This was months ago, and he told us about it. This is, you know, long before we were in office here, but if you have some more information, I can, I'd like to find it.
Sure, I'll, after the meeting, I'll let you read it, and you can, so you can get the information.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, and again, you guys are doing a great job, and I want to thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, man.
Do you have anyone else?
If I might, the police department does have Code Red. It's advertised on our website. If you sign up for that, it takes a little bit of work.
And for road decisions.
Right, yeah.
But this goes beyond that, right? This has all kinds of events and everything, yeah.
I, I have a question for you. Do you find you get too many notifications from NIXLE?
Not at all, just the important ones, like road closures in West Long Branch, and you had to avoid Wall Street, a pole down, a tree down, flood, flood is for...
And I know, that's a free service to local police departments as well.
Thank you. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. The motion? So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, I would ask Councilman Dangler for any comments.
Uh, yes. The Boy Scouts that came up and addressed the council, I would like to applaud them for coming up. It's not, not easy sometimes speaking in public. You did a fine job, and you represented your family and the scouts well. Congratulations.
Thank you. And Councilman Viera?
Yes, I want to thank everybody for coming, and the Boy Scouts. I was about to say the same thing, Ricardo, don't be shy, keep coming, and those Jackson Woods will be ready for you pretty soon. All right, and thanks, everybody. Good night.
Councilwoman Vogt?
So when you talk about representing the Boy Scouts or your family well, let me tell you my moment of Long Branch pride since last we met, and that was someone who just did an extraordinary job representing Long Branch to some visitors that we had. I think most of you know I work for Brookdale Community College. We had our board meeting here last night, and we, our guest was the president of Stockton University. And we were, we wanted to impress him to consider bringing a program to Long Branch. And in order to do that, we wanted to take him on a tour of Long Branch and just show him everything that was going on and the excitement that's going on in this city right now. The person that led that tour, and I know that this is embarrassing, but was Carl Turner. Carl, you were magnificent. He, to, he, he made Long Branch proud in every single aspect, so my thanks, my appreciation, totally, totally outstanding.
Councilwoman Selly?
I would like to just wish everybody a happy Halloween, and remember that there is a curfew in the city. And our next council meeting will not be until November fifteenth, which is a Thursday, so please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
Just like to thank everyone for being here, and thank you for your comments, and have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks.